Welcome, everyone. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for October 12th, 2022. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and extended through March 31st, 2023. For the public to join the meeting remotely through Zoom, please use the link posted on the agenda on the town's website. The governor's order, along with all supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body, is available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. Accordingly, all members of this meeting who will participate, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Thank you. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, turn it over to Meg.
Our vision. The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, without regard to race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments? No one on Zoom or anything? All right, special recognitions, Dr. Chamberlain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we'd like to recognize Ally DeLuca. Our Auburn High School is receiving a national banner recognition from Special Olympics International. Auburn High School has successfully achieved national standards of excellence in the area of inclusion, advocacy, and respect. The athletes, partners, students, coaches, volunteers, teachers, staff, and administration at Auburn High School have all played key roles in creating a social climate where everyone feels included and respected for who they are. Auburn High School is one of only 12 schools in Massachusetts and among 164 schools nationwide to achieve this status for the 2021-2022 school year, something we're very proud of. And we have Ms. DeLuca here with us this evening. I don't know if she'd like to come up to the podium. And Ally, I don't know if you just want to share a little bit about your experience and how you helped us to arrive with this prestigious recognition.
I would say that I didn't do it alone. So I had a lot of support from a lot of teachers, a lot of teachers across the district even for our most recent school day games. I think that was a huge success, and that was partly, well, a lot, due to the fact that there were so many teachers invested in other schools who wanted to dedicate their time and energy and felt a passion for the purpose. And so I think that's a huge, huge plus as a district-wide event where people were really passionate and excited, and I think it went well. I hope to do it again.
She thinks it went well is a little bit of an understatement, but we'll go with that.
I reflected after. In the moment, it was a lot.
It was amazing.
I think the kids benefited, and I think the, for me, it's also about awareness. So as much awareness as we can bring to the inclusion, well, the key term sometimes people say is the inclusion revolution, but I feel like there's surrounding towns and other places that could really benefit from the same, the same kind, I wouldn't say curriculum, but the same components that are involved, which is whole-school engagement, unified sports, and youth leadership. And so we incorporate those three components at Auburn High, and that's how we achieve national banner status. And it's sustainable, so having that be sustainable and sharing it with other communities and spreading awareness is how more kids will have those opportunities, not just kids in Auburn.
Awesome. All right, any comments from the committee?
Well, there was a time when people moved to Auburn because of our great special education program, and now the word is out on this, we're going to have more people moving in to join us.
Well, good.
Yeah.
We'll take them.
Through the chair, as a person who has a sibling that participates in Special Olympics, it's a wonderful program, so I'm so thrilled to see that Auburn is continuing that because it is a wonderful national organization, and to continue it on the high school level is just even more amazing from someone who, my sister could not participate when she was in high school because it wasn't around, and now it is, and so it's amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's about opportunity, and I tell the same story all the time, but I had a student start with our first-ever unified basketball team, and she was afraid of the ball, and we had to roll it, and she had trouble getting up and down the court. And by the time she was a senior, she could reach the hoop, she scored 10 points, we could throw the ball. So it's just about opportunity. Sometimes they just need an opportunity like everyone else.
Yeah, it's amazing. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
No, it's great. I've seen over the years the program build, like when you started it years back. I think I just started on the committee, and to see where it is now and what you've accomplished is so impressive. I mean, every event you have, like everyone's brought to tears, and it's just so, like, moving, and the kids that, you know, the Rockets to Rockets program is amazing, and you really have outdone yourself, and you continue to do it, so just thank you so much.
Thank you. We do have, all of our schools in the district this year received recognition for being unified, so they've all incorporated all those components in some way, shape, or form, and I hope we can continue that. Maybe all, the whole district could be national banner schools.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Through the chair, at the Games, it was amazing because every grade was there, and seeing the kids from K all the way up, being able to participate at different levels, you know, the little kid stuff versus the bigger stuff was just amazing, and they were so proud running around with their medals, like so proud. It was great.
I think also with the high school, Ally, if I'm correct, there was some coursework that kids participate in, right, and through that unified lens? If you want to talk a little bit about those?
Yeah, we offer three Unified Electives. In the fall, we offer Unified Digital Media. In the winter, we have Unified Art, and in the spring, we have Unified PE. One elective course each try. Unified PE is in the spring because it really helps us with our Unified School Day Games and also with our Unified Track Team, because that's a spring sport, so they overlap. But they're very popular classes. They fill up fast, which I love. It's just good for, like I said, awareness, and it takes courage sometimes. People aren't sure how to act or how to integrate, and it just is an example for everybody. So our Rockets has 90 kids in it this year, which is a lot. It's a little overwhelming, but it's good. And we have our first Unified Basketball game, home game tomorrow.
Awesome. I was going to ask what the next big event is that's coming up, so.
We had our first game last week against Worcester Tech, and it was, I would say, pretty successful. We had a big dance party at halftime, which was the highlight. It was one of our, yeah, it was one of our athletes' birthdays as well, so that was, I mean, I always leave on such a happy eye after those events, so Thursday, tomorrow at 3:45, we played Nittmalka at home, and then we only have one other home game, so.
Yeah, but thank you, Ally. The school day games was hugely, wildly, crazily successful, and it was nothing short of organizing, it was like moving nature to get all of those components together and all of that, and you did have a lot of great help, but you definitely took the lead on all that, and you were the standard bearer for that, and we appreciate that and hope that too, that it can continue, because it was an amazing day for everyone, spectators and athletes alike, so thank you.
Thanks for letting me run with it.
We are very lucky to have you. You're amazing. So thank you, and if you ever want to bring any of the players in, like, we would love to, oh my gosh, we would love to hear them, you know?
Sure. They would love it. We just need some music.
Yeah, yeah. All set.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's awesome. Okay. Yeah, motion to approve the minutes from 9:21:22?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:21:22.
I'll second it.
All those in paper?
Aye.
All right. And on to the Student Representatives Report, who we have, we have a newbie here tonight, so.
Hello, everyone. I'm Isabella. I'm a junior at Auburn High School, and I just want to share kind of what's been going on at school. It's been a pretty great start to the school year so far, really positive vibe, but we did have PSATs today, so that was very much less exciting. I'd say that's definitely a negative aspect. But it's all right, because it's balanced out. We have homecoming weekend coming up. On the 14th is the homecoming football game, which is really exciting. I think a lot of people are going to be going to that. And then on Saturday, we have the homecoming games all day, and then the dance at night from 7:00 to 10:00, which I'm really excited for. I think it's going to have a really great turnout this year, even better than last year. There'll also be fundraising booths for all the grades and clubs and things, so it's good to have that. And the craft fair, which I went to last year, and I think it's even going to be better this year.
Awesome. All right, well, thank you, and welcome to this team.
Thank you for having me.
We're excited to have you, and I see Ally is on here finally. We've missed you, Ally. Wow, that was a lot. You must be excited to be a senior finally. And you're very busy. Your schedule seems jam-packed, so thank you for joining us tonight. Yeah. Any comments from the committee? All right.
Great to see you, Ally. Great to have you as well, Bella. We appreciate you coming. Awesome. Awesome job.
Yeah, it's great to hear the updates, because we're not in the building, so it's good, so. All right. Bella, you are welcome to stay, or you can go. It's completely up to you. If you have homework. All right, well, thank you, Ally. Have a great night.
Thanks, Ally.
Good luck on the college applications.
Yes, and soccer. Okay, moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to start, which is not included on the agenda, but I would like to introduce Terry Thomas, who is here with us tonight. Terry, I don't know if you want to come up and just say hello. Terry is serving, as you know, I'm participating in the new superintendent induction program, which is a wonderful program through MASSS, helping new superintendents like myself to hopefully be very successful, and Terry is serving as my coach.
Definitely. The new superintendent's induction program is a three-year program. What we really do is we focus on successful entry, instructional leadership, strategy, and action planning. And I serve as Beth's coach, and really, for Beth, who's quite the rock star, I simply really serve as a thought partner and one of her biggest fans. And it's a thrill to be here tonight to watch you in action. I'm a retired superintendent from the state of Massachusetts and recently finished an interim superintendency in northern New Hampshire, so it's nice to be in the audience for a change. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and I agree, she is a rock star. Oh, man, all right. Well, thank you for all you do, and obviously, you're doing a great job, and you guys are a good team, and we're lucky to have Beth, so.
Lucky to be here. Lucky to be here.
All right, I forgot about Bella talking about the spotlight on students, so is she going back to that, or is that?
No, that was, yeah, that was all wrapped up.
All right. Okay, on to unfinished business.
Okay, so as we've noted previously, school safety is going to remain a priority moving forward. Not that it hasn't been in the past, but it will continue to show up on the agenda regularly. I just wanted to report out that on Friday, we had our first professional development day, and the first part of that included active shooter drills at each of our school buildings that were facilitated by the Auburn Police Department. And as has been the case in the past, our partnership with them has been nothing but positive, and this was, again, another opportunity to work with them and to help our staff to go through a drill that prepares us for something that we hope is not an eventuality and that it never happens. But like most drills, it helps us to see some areas where we can improve, some things that can be tweaked to make things better, to answer people's questions when you really sit down and focus on that. It was, I will say, compared to previous active shooter drills, this was much milder than anything that's happened before. The whole idea was really focused on having people hear that sound. What does that sound sound like in a school building? And then from there, what decisions would you make based on where that sound is? And so people, I think, felt good about the preparation that went in ahead of time so that they knew exactly what to expect. There were no surprises, and from that, we have a list of things that will go before our district safety team to collaborate with the school-based safety teams to make sure that everything we need is in place. So while, I will tell you, I don't think anyone enjoyed it. I certainly did not. It was very important that we go through that exercise, and so moving forward, there will be opportunities for students to participate in modified drills at the high school and middle school, not at the elementary schools. But we are working on that based on a video that was prepared some time ago, and then again, to allow them to ask questions and that kind of thing, so working on that next. But, you know, all the staff had plenty of time to ask whatever questions they wanted of the police department and to get those answered and all of that, so I think it was very well-received, given that it's not anything we really want to talk or think about. We still need to be prepared, so. And based on, I won't steal his thunder, but the rest of the day with the Anti-Defamation League was really good as well, so Alan will maybe talk a little bit about that, but we had a good first professional development day.
All right, great. Any comments or questions? Okay, moving on to hopefully our last COVID update.
It is, it is. So after I was considered Debbie Downer at the last meeting, I had a whole list of pretty negative things to talk about, I said, "Well, I don't want to talk about that anymore." So what I've put in here is that I will not continue to carry a COVID-19 update on the agenda unless something out of the ordinary happens, unless there's a significant change in the status of things. I will continue to report out COVID-19 positive on Tuesday and Friday of each week to the community, along with posting the weekly total on our dashboard, which is located on our website, so that people can always see what the numbers are. But even as of today, I think there were only three that were put on the sheet, so seemingly, I think we're going to ride this up and down, right? We're going to have times where those numbers are going to go up and times when they'll come down again, but unless it's unusual, I don't think it's a topic that, I mean, I feel like we should have a little ceremony to retire this topic. It's been on there for so long, but. But I think it's time to move on, so just wanted to let folks know, but I'm always available to answer any questions or anything related to that, so we're retiring that item.
I'm totally okay with that.
Let's kick it right out the door.
Yeah. We can all approve it. All right, moving on to the superintendent listening sessions and student surveys.
Just an update, so I had scheduled two superintendent listening sessions. One was to take place on October 3rd, the other on the 11th. I had to cancel the October 3rd one, unfortunately, but invited the 30, about 32 folks that had showed interest in coming to the listening sessions to the session last evening. We had 10 show up, so at least I wasn't alone at my party, and 10, 10 very invested folks, so I was really pleased that they came. And we talked about a lot of things. Alan was there with me. We gave a brief overview of the draft of the strategic plan as it stands now with the input from the Equity Audit that took place last spring, and some folks had some very thoughtful things, some, and I'll share in more depth, but some talk about communication, how we primarily rely on email communication, which is great, but as I was thinking about it, I check my work email all the time, but my personal email, after I've been at work all day, tends to take a backseat, right? So if that's the only way we're communicating with families, and they've been on email all day long, they may not be checking, right, for big events. So they did talk about how we don't do even the phone calls anymore unless it's an emergency. So maybe when there are big events that we really want people to attend, should we also make the phone call one call and make sure it's on Facebook and all of those places?
Through the chair, can I ask one question? I know I get text messages from the middle school when they send an email. Is that a way we could do that?
Yes, we were just talking about that actually today at the principal's meeting, because I thought that you had to opt in, but Greg's like, "Oh, I just sent it out."
Yeah, I always get it, Greg.
He's like, "Yeah, I just sent it out." I was like, "Oh, all right, well, there we go."
Text messages, go check your email.
Yes, yeah, and that's really what he said. It's a short message that says, "Check your email about Curriculum Night," or whatever, so we are going to look into that, so that should help too. Yeah. Yeah, it's just, you know, we all get inundated with information, and sometimes it's hard to tease through it all to make sure you see what you see, so that was one thing that came up, but really thoughtful communication, so I was appreciative that I had it. Also in your packet, as I had said, I had put out some student surveys for Swanson Road, the middle school and the high school. Those are in the process of being completed by students now. In that survey, they have the opportunity to join a superintendent's discussion group, which, once all the surveys are done, I will put the groups together to have almost like a focus group listening session with the kids that want to participate and hear what they want to say about how school can be made better. From my very quick glance through the middle school responses, it is very clear that we need a tambourine in the Auburn Middle School music room.
Oh, my, okay.
And it's been way too long that we have not had a tambourine, so that's the first item. I think it's valid, and I think it's important. How are you going to have a little band without a tambourine? So those are some of the things that would make that school better, and I really appreciated it, you know? It's those little, truly, it's the little things that make a difference for kids, right? Like, that's really bothering this student, that there isn't a tambourine, so we should have one, and I will make sure that we get one, so.
She's got not an option through the chair as part of percussion. My daughter picked up percussion this year, so I'm a little nervous.
Yeah, I say so. I might have to get two tambourines just to make sure I'm very well-covered, right? But, yeah, but some really interesting comments, and I had a couple of students who said they had filled out the survey and hadn't opted to be in the discussion group, but they had changed their mind, and could they still come? So I put them on the list, so I'll be scheduling those sessions over the next couple of weeks to hear from the students and hear what they'd like to see to improve our schools, so.
All right.
Yeah, it's exciting, and I will tell you, for me, there's nothing better than listening to kids, and I will also be scheduling a couple of sessions for teachers as well, so something after school that we can get together and talk about what things they might think. I need to know to make sure that the district is moving in the right direction, so we're making progress. It takes time to see all these folks, but it's all worthwhile.
Through the chair, when you meet with the teachers, are you allowing it to be like just you and the teachers, or will admins be there as well?
I was going to set it up that it would be me.
And no admin?
And no admin.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that'll be good. I think that just give them a chance to, like, have an open conversation with you without feeling like there's someone watching over them.
And I really do hope, as well as we did last night, is that this is about questions and about hopes and dreams, right? So I'm not looking to have this be, you know, let's come with all our complaints, right? What do we want? What do we envision as we look forward for the Auburn Public Schools, and what do we really want it to look like, right? And how can we make that happen? So that's really the goal of those meetings.
Through the chair, I think that sometimes, like, newer teacher, if I had a chance to meet with the superintendent, I'd be so, like, if my admin was right there, and I'd be like, "My hope and dream is to have doubt that thought," I'd be so freaked out. So I think it'll be good to not, you know, have a principal there so they can speak freely.
Yeah.
You know, not necessarily like a complaint session, which we all are very good at as teachers, but.
As human beings, I think, yeah.
Well, especially teachers, we're very good at it, so I think it'll be good.
Great.
All right, any more comments, questions?
No. Still worried about the tambourine.
Nightmares now.
It's going to end up in your mailbox.
Might be better than the drums, though.
Valid truth.
Okay, well, we will move on to the superintendent's evaluation. So this is, it's a little different this year. Each member of the school committee has completed an evaluation of Dr. Chamberlain's performance reflecting on her tenure since January of 2022. This October evaluation is being completed this year only and adheres to Dr. Chamberlain's contract. Moving forward, future evaluations will be completed in the later second half of the school year. The evaluation that has been conducted is in accordance with the terms of the DESI educator evaluation and consists of four standards: instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Feedback from teachers, administration, and parents was collected. Based on those findings, we were then able to rate each benchmark as exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. According to Dr. Chamberlain's current contract, if the superintendent is awarded an overall rating of proficient or exemplary, the school committee has agreed to offer Dr. Chamberlain a three-year contract effective July 1st, 2023, when her current contract expires. And I feel like this contract thing has been going on for five years, so I'm pretty much looking for this inclusion. Okay, so I'm going to go over it very briefly. It was a lot of rating there, and I just noticed my daughter got pizza all over this one, so. So the first part is instructional leadership, and we rated on curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, data-informed decision-making, and student learning, and each person gave their own rating, and then I just gathered them all up and majority ruled for the overall rating. So the overall rating for standard one, instructional leadership, is proficient. I'll read some of the comments. They were very nice comments, too, so. "Dr. Chamberlain has a strong ability to utilize data to support instruction in APS District. Thanks to our excellent administration leadership, Auburn students at all levels show excellent progress in all assessed areas." The next standard is management and operations, and we rated on environment, human resources management and development, scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics, and policies, fiscal systems, and the overall rating for standard two, management and operations, is proficient. One of the members had said, "Safety has been a priority of Dr. Chamberlain's, and I have no concerns as to the safety of the Auburn Public Schools." And I agree with that 100%, like you've gone above and beyond, so.
Thank you.
Standard three, the family and community engagement, and you just basically proved how exemplary you are in that area. So we looked at engagement, sharing responsibility, communication, and family concerns. The overall rating for standard three, family and community engagement, is exemplary. One member said, "Dr. Chamberlain excels at family and community engagement. Families are updated through email with updates and activities happening within the schools and community." Another person said, "Dr. Chamberlain is always meeting with police and fire to keep our schools safe and secure." And lastly, standard four, professional culture. We looked at commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, communication, continuous learning, shared vision, and managing conflict. The overall rating for standard four, professional culture, is proficient. Comment, "Dr. Chamberlain has always led Auburn in a pursuit of continuous learning." So we don't want you to go anywhere. I feel like this was kind of, since January, kind of a test to see if you even wanted this, because I feel like we're lucky to have you. So, yeah, as a committee, if you are willing, we would like to offer you a three-year contract when this contract expires in July.
I really appreciate those comments very much, and I appreciate the confidence that you're showing. I really appreciate those comments very much and I appreciate the confidence that you're showing in me. I will tell you, I am trying hard, really hard. Um, and the support that you've allowed and given to me has been, has made all the difference. Uh, never mind all the work of the folks that I work with, um, whether here at central office or in the school buildings. So it takes a village and, uh, this is one village, as I said this morning, that I am very, very proud to be a part of. So I appreciate your confidence and I will work hard to make sure I don't disappoint anybody.
No.
Thank you.
Yes, you're amazing. Um, I was just gonna say something intelligent and I totally forgot. Anyone else have any comments here?
Uh, through the chair, I mean, I think we had what was best in front of us all along. Um, I remember hiring you from Bryn Mawr to assistant superintendent and thinking, well, this is a good, you know, stepping stone to move up and I think it's great. You know, I'm not an elementary or educator at this level, but, um, seeing what you've done is amazing and I can't think of a better person than Job.
Thank you.
Uh, through the chair, I had a couple of comments. Um, one is a parent. To, your communication, I think, is outstanding. There's never been a time where I wondered what was going on or anything like that. You're very open and honest with your emails that you send out and I appreciate them. Um, as a new school committee member, I'd like to say, one thing really stands out for me, and I did put it in there, um, high school graduation. And when we were standing up there and I was watching the kids walk to get their diploma, the excitement on your face and knowing every single kid's name and congratulating them, I just, it really showed how important these students are to you. And I think that's wonderful and we're very lucky to have a superintendent who goes above and beyond that you do. And also to watch you out in the community, the way that you speak, the way you interact with people, I think, again, is outstanding and you do a wonderful job.
Thank you, Brooke. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, when Brooke and I were running, one of the questions was, um, something about superintendents and we had had a conversation. Um, and before even we came to the school committee meeting where you were appointed interim and my thought process was, you've been doing such a great job, um, that we should offer you the chance to show us what you can do fully in that position. And I stand by that and I stand by everything I said that you really have shown us, like during COVID, that you could rise the occasion and you're continuing to do that. And I agree with Brooke, like as a parent, I have, take away the school committee piece, like I've never felt like I, I know more about what's going on in the school than sometimes I do in anything else. So and I really appreciate that as a parent, that I feel like my children are safe, my children are getting the best education possible and I really truly believe that a lot of that is because you, that we have a great leader at the helm.
Thank you so much. It's very humbling. Um, and did you wanna say anything, Gil? Uh, yeah, um. I've seen a lot of superintendents in Auburn. Some very good, some not so good, some bye-bye. But, uh, you've, you've been one of the best and I'm so glad that you're with us and you've been there to help us when we were in a crisis and I think you're one terrific superintendent, so.
Thank you, Gil. Thank you very much. Really thank you all. It takes us all working together to make this work. Um, and you've all been honest and open and the communication, right, it all makes a difference, so I just can't thank you enough. I really, really appreciate it and I promise I'm gonna work hard to, to keep going here, keep going.
Well, in a little side note, so some of the stuff was proficient. I mean, a couple of the members were so new, they didn't even know how to answer, so. It's so early in the school year that we haven't really seen a lot of the stuff implemented, so I, I feel like some of it was rated proficient for that reason. So you have the whole rest of the year to become exemplary, but basically we just need to see it in action. And so by default, you know, you got proficient, but yeah, we're all pretty happy and we feel very blessed and lucky to have you, so, um, keep up the good work.
Works both ways.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, now that we're feeling all warm and cuddly, there's no COVID up there. No COVID. I know, we'll move on to new business. Um, October 1 enrollment.
Yes, Madam Chair, as we do each year at this time, uh, we provide the committee with the October 1 enrollment, um, in a format that, uh, we have done previously. So sharing this with you, um, you'll see that, uh, overall, uh, we are down seven students from last school year. Uh, you'll see that the biggest changes have been at Swanson Road and at Packerchog. This is, as you might imagine, a bit of a moving target each year with where those, where the pluses and negatives will be. Um, but certainly that's where we've seen that drop, uh, of late. The one thing I did wanna note is that if we look back to 2018 and 2019, you'll see we were 2637, 2636 for the number of students, so over 2,600. Uh, and now we're at 2,570. So I know in the, the most recent last meeting, we talked a bit about enrollment, uh, based on the, the new, uh, housing developments that are going into town. Uh, and so if we look back at those years, 18 and 19, basically I wanna say we're still relatively staffed at a similar level as we were then. Um, you know, we have added social emotional support folks and that kind of thing. Um, but in general, and I don't wanna say across the board, but we've not added a whole lot of positions, um, or lost any positions since then. So seemingly we'll be, um, somewhat well-positioned and, and we'll talk a little bit more about looking ahead to enrollment, but, um, so that was one thing that I wanted to point out. What we've also added to this chart that wasn't done previously is at the bottom, you'll see we also included the OOD, that's our out-of-district students. So those are the students, um, in each grade that they are placed into for grades, uh, seven through 12. Our school choice students, you'll see that we had a fairly substantial drop in our school choice students. We had, um, a number of kids who, as they left eighth grade going to ninth grade, either went back to their home district, uh, went to private schools for high school. Um, and we've been monitoring that. We have a few students for our high school, uh, school choice on a waiting list. Um, but I also know right now that we're in, things are pretty good as far as the number of kids we have, so I hesitate to bring on anyone else just right now, right? Um, and we'll have to look that, at that again in the springtime, uh, as far as how we'll handle that for next school year, based on, um, you know, that housing development and all of those things that we're looking at, so. Um, I think those are the, oh, and we also included a line for new enrollments this school year. So we'll see, um, Mandy can attest to, uh, if you take kindergarten and preschool out, because those registrations for the most part happen separately. They don't happen here through central office over the summer. So if you take those out, we still had over a hundred, um, new registrations over the summer. Now those are offset, right, because, by the number of withdrawals that we have, cause people move out and in. Um, and so that's where we get to that number that we're still holding steady with, you know, seven less than last year. Um, but I will tell you, that's a busy thing to enroll a hundred kids in the summertime and get them all where they need to be, so. Uh, and those were right up until even beyond the first day of school, I think, that, that new students were still coming in.
Yeah, that was wild.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I also think, you know, it, to digress a little bit, but I think the buses all worked themselves out so far. I've been checking with AA Transportation. I will tell you, when you looked hard and close at those numbers, it was a little scary that we were gonna be very, very full. Um, and so far, so good. Uh, so far, so good. They've been checking that so that we're, we're at a very safe number on our buses. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about that. This is the information. There's a big October 1 enrollment, uh, report that has to be filed with the state that Eric will be working on. And these are some of the numbers that he'll be using for that.
Any questions? Alright, it makes me feel a little better.
Yes.
You know?
It made me feel better too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it was very doom and gloom the last meeting.
Yeah.
I'm glad how we're gonna do this, but yeah, that's good to see. Alright, so if there's no questions or comments, we'll move on to the budget kickoff.
Yes, Madam Chair, so just sharing some information because if you can believe it, we're already looking forward to 2324. Um, Mrs. Worsbicky has been, uh, sharing with the leadership team the various paperwork that each school needs to fill out and each department on, um, before they, to prepare for the budget. Um, we will also, through this, uh, budget process, be mindful of the contractual obligations. Uh, we are entering into negotiations this year with instructional assistants, secretaries, and custodians as their current contract expires in June of 23. Um, as I said, we continue to monitor bus ridership as that's a consideration if we were indeed to have to, uh, add a school bus based on all of that. So I've given you a, a basic timeline of what we're looking at. I don't know this evening if there are any specific goals or item areas that you'd like us to also take into consideration in relation to the budget, um, related to priorities that you, you know, I know in the past that the committee's talked about, uh, you know, maintaining the class sizes that we have and that sort of thing. Um, but if there's anything else, would certainly, uh, entertain that information this evening. Then Mrs. Worsbicky and the leadership team will work together. We'll have individual meetings with each of the principals to go through their, what they're requesting. Um, on November 9th, we'll submit the budget document to you. On the 30th, we'll have our formal budget presentations to school committee. And then, uh, January 4th, we'll need to have a vote to send a budget forward to the town manager by January 6th. Um, and so then we will submit that to them and then we'll have, uh, the budget available for public comments starting on January 9th. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about that process.
I have one question. It's been on the news. I think it's mostly for homeowners, but the electric rates are supposed to go sky high next month. Are we all set because we've done a prepay program or budgeted or?
Yes, did you wanna talk about that, Cecilia?
Well, we, we have a set rate and our rates did go up. Um, they went up 30% from last year and we did go to, um, we are planning to go to Fall Town Meeting with a warrant article to, well, to bring.
Extra.
Yeah, to give us some extra money, 30% from what we had anticipated in the budget, so that'll help us for this year. But in planning for next year, we will need to make sure that we account for all of that as we plan and move forward, so.
Yeah, the other issue that will be up for consideration is that we have some credits that we've been getting from the solar panels up on, on the middle school.
Yeah.
Um, we're getting toward the end of our credits, so that's going to be another consideration. That's going to factor into the budget preparation. But we'll have more information on that when we actually present the budget and have that for you.
What happens when we run out of credits?
Means we gotta pay for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the credits were offsetting the, the electric charges.
They were basically the credits that were from when we first opened the new middle school, the CHIPS program. Joe Fahy had worked with National Grids and we had gotten quite a, quite a large chunk of money that was put aside. So in the years since we opened, we haven't really been having to pay much of an electric bill over at the middle school, but we knew that there was gonna be kind of a funding cliff so that we would have to put that back on the table as far as financing. Cause we've been able to cover it with the, the large, um, credit that we did have, but as year to year, it's been eating away, so it's been six years now, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I've been very fortunate, but this year is gonna be the year that I, I believe we're at the end of the rope this year, so we're gonna have to plan for it for 2024.
Through the chair, has there, because I, I feel like COVID really did expose like weaknesses in all school districts. Like have we considered, like boosting up our nursing, like nurses and having maybe like a lead nurse, having like a head nurse that's, you know, that's, because I, I'm concerned that we just don't have enough nurses in the, in the district.
So I will tell you that if we did a comparison, and this was a few years ago, we are very well-staffed for nursing and we did up our nursing staff for COVID, when COVID all hit. Um, we're in a little bit of a transition now. We have a couple of new folks coming on, on board. Um, and we're giving consideration to that. Um, Mr. Keller and Mr. Walton, our Director of Pupil Services, have been meeting with the nurses to kind of discuss all of this. Um, nothing's off the table, but I will tell you for a district our size, it's unusual to have a lead nurse who would not have a building responsibility, right? And so right now what we do is we stipend our lead nurse and when we stipend someone, just like we do with our, uh, department heads or the like, that stipend is intended for time outside of their workday, right? So there are some things that a lead nurse is really important to have, right, where there, you know, if there's a new policy that has to be written or, um, certainly making sure we're keeping up with the most up-to-date screenings and those types of things. Um, but we, we have five schools. If we were Worcester, right, Worcester needs a lead nurse for sure. Worcester may need two. I don't, I don't know what they have.
I think they have four right now.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, they're a very big district. We have five schools. Um, and right now, certainly through COVID, it was imperative that we had somebody and our lead nurse worked all the time because of that.
How many nurses do we have right now?
Well, we have one in each, one in each building. Um, we have two over at the middle school right now because of looking at the caseloads of, um, the medical needs of, of kids. And at the high school, we have an additional LPN, um, who serves the preschool, um, but also helps out in the high school when things are particularly busy. Um, this year, we had an LPN on staff who, um, was designated to work with a one-to-one student. The student didn't return to school. We kept the LPN on because we knew that was gonna, we knew, we've, we've struggled with sub nurses. Um, and we now have brought two on, I think, already that have completed their packets and have done some of the training so that we have, we're building that back up. We used to have a pretty significant list, but COVID hit all of that, right? But we're working on building that back. We need to look carefully at our nurses. Um, but if we, do we need a, a lead nurse who has no responsive, direct responsibility to a building? I'm just not sure that we're big enough for that, that would warrant that.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I think maybe a secondary nurse who's assigned to a building, but also the lead who can do evaluation, serve on the leadership team, um, might be beneficial, just because I know that I, for a while, wasn't evaluated by a nurse. I was evaluated by, I forget what it was. And it was very hard because they didn't understand the role of the nurse. Um, I haven't done my research in other districts, what other districts do, other than Worcester, but I, I know city school nursing, so maybe, yes, I don't think solely leadership, but I think secondary nurse in a school maybe with that leadership role who then has that ability to serve in that leadership capacity.
Yeah, and we're also in the process now of working at making sure that we have someone who's designated at the lead nurse every day. So right now it's a point-six position.
Yeah.
So we're working on that now too. So we definitely have some things to look at and we, we wanna collaborate with the nurses to make sure that we do that appropriately.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? We're good. Alrighty, uh, move on to equity and special education indicators and initiative status 2022 to 2023.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So also in your packet, um, you'll find an email from Russell Johnston, Senior Associate Commissioner from DESI. And this email is designed to identify Auburn of its status related to significant disproportionality, which I included a little colored flyer, I think, in here as well that kind of explains what that is. Um, it measures whether certain students from racial or ethnic groups are disproportionately placed in settings or are disproportionately receiving certain kinds of disciplinary removals. Um, additionally, it also speaks to indicators four, nine, and 10, which examine, excuse me, if students with IEPs from these same groups are suspended or expelled more than comparable students statewide, or if they're disproportionately receiving special education services. I am pleased to report to the committee that Auburn, Auburn was either not identified, not flagged, or not identified or at risk.
Oh, great.
Um, and share my appreciation with the work that Mr. Walton continues to do and also with Mrs. Reedy, because this goes back to her tenure as the Director of Pupil Services. Um, so that just, um, speaks well for how our students are, are being treated who are on IEPs and those who are qualifying for IEPs as well.
So basically it said no problems in Auburn.
Correct.
Awesome.
Yes. We like those kind of messages, yes.
Yeah, and I'd like to shout out to, uh, Rosemary Reedy too.
Yeah, she did a lot.
She, yeah, made the foundation for this.
She did, she did.
Yeah, it was great. It's good stuff. Okay, uh, moving on to Auburn Public Schools. I think we'll do it after.
Okay.
Yeah, Auburn Public Schools School Building Study Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at the last, one of our last meetings, when we talked about, uh, the new housing, um, development that's going to be going into town, along with the potential for a second one, that's going to be going, uh, through the towns, uh, process to see if they're going to get approval. It does seem prudent at this time that we put together a committee, a formal committee that would serve, um, you know, where we would file our agendas with the town as we do for this committee, um, to get a group of, um, stakeholders invested, whether, uh, associated with the town, school committee, maybe some parents, so maybe some people familiar with, um, facilities in the town, that we take a look at, how are we using our current buildings? Is the space being used effectively? Do we think that there are changes we could make with we current, with what we currently have to make it more efficient? Um, and to get everybody at the table to do so. Because if down the road, we get the 67 students from up off of Albert Street and there's another 44 that come in off Perry Place, and who knows what else, right, because we know how those things go. Um, you know, none of these things happen quickly. They all take time, right? Time to meet, time to talk, time to get researched, time to get information. Time to meet, time to talk, time to get researched, time to get information. It seemed like now might be a good time to start this and see where it leads us. Even if we did, got some information on doing an evaluation of each of the buildings.
Yeah.
And see, see, see what that tells us. So I look to the committee for your input and to see if you're willing to have me facilitate that happening. And then we would move forward with who we might want to see involved in such a committee and see if we can put that together.
Through the chair, I'd be very interested in that committee.
Okay. Agreed.
Well, can I get a motion to approve and then we'll discuss?
I'll make a motion to support the formation of the Auburn Public School Building Study Committee.
And I'll second. Okay, any discussion? So Meg, you're interested.
I mean, I know there can only be two of us, so if anyone else is, that's fine, but I think it's a great committee to have.
Yeah, it's definitely a step in the right direction and good to keep ahead of this.
Right, we know what's coming.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I'd be interested as well. Obviously, there's gonna be more than, there's two, but that's okay.
And I think part of that is the, you know, makeup, which I, I know that some time ago, I think this was actually after the middle school was approved, there was a committee that was put together to look at how are we going to use, right? I think that's when the decision was made around consolidating JB and PAC into the old middle school. And I think that was the role that that committee played. So similarly, it's looking at what do we have for space and how are we using it and, and how can we make the best use of it? So at that time, there were some folks, I think there was someone from the planning board that might have been on there, potentially maybe finance. So there was a very, and I can, I can get that for all of you with the, the diverse people that were on there, but some people that had some background in facility work, right? Because that's going to be helpful to us as well. So I can begin to kind of compile some potential candidates and see where it goes. And, you know, we might not even get this going till after the first of the year, right? Because now before you know it, it's going to be Christmas. I hate to say it, Halloween's right around the corner and all the holidays. So we might look at something like that.
Yeah, and really no rush anyway.
Correct, correct.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there's a vote, so add that to your to-do list. On that note, the superintendent's draft performance goals for 2022 and 2023.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I am presenting to you tonight a set of draft goals. I'm calling them draft because typically what I would do is once I am evaluated, I use that information to develop goals.
Yeah.
And so some of this may need to be changed, but I thought it was a good first step. Whether we, whether there's an action tonight or we wait until the next meeting, it's entirely up to the committee. And so as recommended by DESI, they look at, you know, you need a student learning goal. And so in the student learning goal, because this is an ongoing initiative, I included universal design for learning. Have already spoken with principals about how we can continue to move universal design for learning forward. I believe that this is going to be the key to elevating the engagement of our students in the learning process and making sure that they're able to express their learning in a way that's meaningful for them. So this is a very important component of what we've done for the last year plus and something that'll move forward for another. We've committed to it for three years, but as with anything, you have to look at it and talk about it and bring it forward to make sure that it sticks. And so I think it's really important that, that's part of my goal to make sure that this is something that sticks. So that's the student learning goal. The next one is professional practice goal, which upon advisement of my coach and others, this is where we put in the new superintendent induction program that I participate fully and take all I can away from it. And I will tell you that already it's been great. They're doing a mix of in-person and Zoom meetings, which is really helpful to a busy superintendent to not always have to be out of the building. So I appreciate that. And they've done it in two shorter sessions, so you're not on Zoom all day. So it's really working out quite well. So I'm very appreciative of the program. It's bringing a lot to, to helping me out as I move through this. And then I have three district improvement goals. One being again, to keep safety on the front burner, right? We have to really reinvigorate, reinvigorate both the district safety team and the school-based safety teams where they become active, well-known, current groups in every school building and across the district. And along with that, this is going to pull in some of the training that we still have to complete this year, which Alan is working on, which still speaks to safety. The Jason training, which is around suicide prevention. Enough training, which is around sexual assault awareness. That's something we had done several years ago. On, you know, ongoing for restraint, bullying, AED and EpiPen use and all the other responsibilities that folks need updating on. All of that contributes to the safety of our kids in our building. So again, reinstituting all of these and making sure that they're active and productive groups. The second district improvement goal has, is related to the strategic plan process, right? With the listening sessions, because I do hope that sometimes later in the fall, we don't have a draft strategic plan anymore, right? We have one that was going to drive what we do. So that's again, ongoing, keeping in line with all the listening sessions and hearing from folks to make sure that everyone's voice is included in that process. And then the final goal has to do with the work around the Anti-Defamation League. We had a great half-day with our staff the other day, really scratching the surface of things that we need to be aware of to make sure that all of our students feel a sense of belonging and that we appreciate all of our students for who they are, their differences, their, their likenesses and everything in between. So I put it to the committee. Again, if you'd like to take some time to read through these, I'm more than open to doing that. Or if you think there should be anything added or changed and we can do that tonight or we can do it at the next meeting. That's the, the will of the, the committee.
You guys think, do you need more time to look it over or any objections?
It just looks fine.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
I think it looks good too.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's performance goals as presented.
I'll make a motion. To, sorry, to accept the superintendent performance goals as presented for the.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks good.
Awesome, thank you.
Now I have to backpedal a little because I didn't, we didn't make a motion to approve your evaluation. So I need to entertain a motion to approve the October 2022 evaluation results.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Set in stone now, you can't. All right, move right on to teaching and learning report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may, just talking about Dr. Chamberlain's evaluation, I just want to say, as, as you all know, I'm new here. And so I want to also thank Dr. Chamberlain for her vision and leadership. As I think you all know, there's a lot of new people in this building as well as we have a new principal. So her guidance, vision and patience and work ethic are, are outstanding. So I appreciate you doing all that. So I just wanted to mention that. And I know that Terry is your coach, but I thought I was your thought partner. All right, so I, I'm gonna pull this up. There we go. So this is just a first opportunity to talk about MCAS results. We're not going to talk about Auburn results because we just got those at the end of September. And so I'm just going to talk a little bit about what's happening in the state. So I will go through a little bit of the timeline. So on September twenty-sixth, official data was released to school districts. On the twenty-ninth, that data was released to the public. And you may have seen in the newspapers in different places where they talk about how, how Massachusetts performed. And then just last week, we received written parent reports. And so right now the schools are stuffing those reports into envelopes and you should be getting those, those who are their parents should be getting those relatively soon as the schools get all those stuffed and mailed out to, to families. A couple of things that I, so, sorry. So in terms of our Auburn data and some of the stuff that our students are performing at, which I'm sure all of us are most interested in, my plan is to present that to you on October twenty-sixth. We've begun looking at that data and so I have meetings scheduled in the next couple of weeks with the building leaders, Dr. Chamberlain, to look at that data and really kind of dig in and to identify where we're shining and where we need to do some improvement. So that's the plan. So just in terms of a reminder of where we've been, 2019 was the last year that we had a full test prior to last year. So in 2020, there were no tests. And in 2021, grades three through eight took a half test and grade ten took a full test. So it's important to just note that for grades two through eight, the last time they had a, a full test was in 2019.
Excuse me, the half test, does that mean less subjects or shorter?
Shorter.
Yeah, exactly, shorter. Yeah, fewer items on that test, yeah. So same subjects, but just fewer items.
Okay.
What we're looking at, or what we're seeing when we look at the statewide data is that there were mixed results comparing 2022 to 2021. Some of the bright spots were math scores increased in 2022 compared to 2021. Science increased slightly. ELA has declined. And, and we look at comparing 2022 to pre-pandemic times with, there's quite a ways to go to fully recover the learning losses that took place over the past two and a half years. And there's a lot of absenteeism that was talked about at the state level and the number of students who were absent from school. And obviously if you're not in school, you're missing a lot of instruction and conversation. We've looked at some of that data at our level in Auburn and fortunately absenteeism was actually not bad in Auburn. So that's something that we do not see as an issue here. So we'll start with ELA. So I'm going to start with a graph and just kind of orient you to the graph. So if you look on that left column, it's grades, we're looking at grade span. So grades three through five, six through eight and three through eight. And that second column there is 2019 and that's the percentage of students who were meeting or exceeding expectations. So if we take grades three through five, for instance, again, 2019 was pre-pandemic. Fifty-three percent of students in Massachusetts in grades three through five were meeting or exceeding state, meeting, meeting or exceeding expectations. In 2021, that number dropped to forty-nine percent. And then in 2022, forty-one percent of students in Massachusetts were meeting or exceeding. And so then those next three columns reflect changes. So nineteen to twenty-one, you can see that there was a four percent reduction. Comparing twenty-one to twenty-two, there was an eight percent reduction. And then when we compare the pre-pandemic year to last year, overall, there's a twelve percent reduction in grades three through five. And so then you can look at those grade spans, three through five, six through eight and three through eight. And so in ELA, in looking at the data, there are two main areas that we're looking at as, at the state level that are areas for improvement. The first was writing scores. And what they've talked about, as you can see in that bullet point, is that nearly one-third of all students in Massachusetts, grades three through eight scored a zero on one of their writing prompts. In 2019, that was a nineteen percent. So a zero can be, I didn't put anything on this essay or I put something and it had nothing to do with what was being asked. And so that's a pretty significant increase when we look at writing skills. And we've, we've had conversations with principals who talk about the impact that COVID has had on students' writing and their ability to stick with a, a task. And so that's something that we need to look at seriously, once we dig into our numbers. The other piece is early literacy as, as being an area for improvement. And so I believe it's the next slide that we can take a look at and see that's, oh, no, that's, that's math. I'm sorry. So early literacy is another area. If we look at grades three through five compared to grades six, seven and eight, which has shown not as much recovery from twenty-two compared to twenty-one. Okay, so then if we look at math, which I mentioned earlier was kind of a bright spot, then that we're showing improvement. Now granted, when we look at 2022 compared to 2019, we're still down eight percentage points when it comes to meeting or exceeding. But when we compare twenty-one to twenty-two, you can see that if we take grade three, for instance, they are up eight percentage points from 2021. And so essentially they're, they've halved the, the learning loss, if that makes sense. So we're on the road to recovery in math. And if you look all the way down to the bolded grades three through eight, if you look at that span, there was a plus six increase in twenty-one to twenty-two. Science, we're seeing a slight improvement if, if we're focusing on that change twenty-one to twenty-two. And I keep referencing twenty, twenty-one to twenty-two because what the state is telling us, and I think it makes a lot of sense, is that we really need to look at 2021 as kind of the baseline. We're in a, a different world right now and we're having to recover from the learning loss that took place. And so right now, comparing our numbers, anybody's numbers to 2019 doesn't make a lot of sense, but we have to use 2021 as kind of that baseline. So you can see that's a small recovery compared to 2021, but it is a recovery nonetheless. And so what's next? As I mentioned earlier, the goal is to, at the October twenty-sixth, school committee meeting is to present you with some of Auburn's data and tell you the things that we see as highlights and the things that we're looking at as patterns that we need to work on and some of the things that we're going to develop as an action plan for our work in the schools and tying those to our district improvement. But also recognizing that the two and a half year, last two and a half years have been normal, haven't been normal, in case you haven't noticed. So. Questions?
Questions or comments?
Through the chair, I just think it's very, I find that very interesting because within education, like the teachers are seeing that, especially with the writing piece. So it, it just proves that like that is happening, like we talk about it all the time, like the, the writing has just. But if you think about it, if you, if you were to look at that three through five slide of the kids taking the MCAS in grade three, they didn't have a real normal year of school until first grade and that's early literacy. So we're, I think we're going to see this for a long time. We're going to see that this group of three through five kids, as they move up, because they didn't get that early literacy, that reading part, is going to have a tremendous impact through the years. I think it's gonna, we're going to see it all through high school. So it's just a very interesting, I'm very interested to see the Auburn data. See how it, how it falls within that. And I think we're just going to see a huge issue in the ELA. So, but I think it's going to be everywhere, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and I think that's how we have to look at this, is that this is, this is our, this is where we're, this is where we are. Now what do we do?
The new normal.
Right? What do we do now? We have a lot of smart people that work here. We have a lot of really talented educators and now it's digging in and getting to the work and, and helping our kids move forward. You know, the first meeting we went to with DESI, you know, you kind of want to say like, yeah. Yeah, like, right? Did we think the scores were going to go through the roof after everything we've been through? And, you know, they talked a lot about student absenteeism, but our teachers were hit with illness too. So we had teachers out of school too, right? So that's a, that like compounds all of that, you know, and, and makes it an exponential impact, I think. So we definitely have work to do, but I also know that kids are resilient.
Yeah.
And we're going to come along. It's just going to be some good old hard work that we have to put into it to, to move us, us forward, so.
Through the chair, what used to be a twenty-four hour absence from school turned into a either ten day or now five day. It's extended.
Yep.
Yeah, and not to mention the loss of life for some of these kids and faculty. I mean, these people have been through a lot. And I have full faith in our faculty. They are amazing. So I think they need, you know, we got to take this with a grain of salt. Like it's really no one's fault. We just need to, you know, do the best we can from here on out.
Yeah, we just need to know where we're at and move forward.
Yeah, and I think, I agree with Jesse that, you know, these kids have been put through the wringer as well as these teachers. And to see them working as hard as they are and as quickly as they are and coming back from twenty-one to twenty-two, seeing those, just that upright there just gives us hope and that these kids are resilient. Our teachers are resilient.
Yeah, and we're thankful to have them because it's a great walkout right now, so.
And through the chair, I think many teachers are, were very concerned about if they put on their evals, like based on MCAS scores and they're going to be like, oh my God. But I mean, it's a testament to show that, that they are improving even if we're using 2021 as a baseline, you know?
Yeah.
So I mean, I've seen it with my own daughter and I have to say, like, her teacher this year and her special ed teacher are like unbelievable. So I'm like, all right, they got this down. Like I don't have anything to worry about, so.
Yeah, through the chair, just a quick story I heard yesterday from a parent of now fourth grader and third grade. The teacher wrote a personal letter to each child the night of, before MCAS. So they all got it in their little thing saying, you know, this test doesn't define you and all of that. And that just speaks to that social emotional impact that, you know, if you read that before you take this, this big ugly test or whatever it is, that just helps so much. So just understanding the growth and development of kids that a lot of these teachers have is just amazing. And I'm sure our scores will show that because kids aren't going to learn if they're stressed, so it's awesome.
Yeah.
Right, I'd rather see mentally healthy children.
Amen, I agree.
Yeah.
Agreed, yep.
All right, well, we can't wait for that presentation.
We need to get that. It's time to mentally prepare.
I know, Mr. Downer. All right, well, thank you for that report.
Yeah, my pleasure.
That's some tedious work.
That's great, yeah.